Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, July 14th, 2016, and may we have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have presentations, so I'd like to call on first Commissioner Drew Sharkey of Cheltenham Township, who was the President of the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners, and Commissioner R. Samuel Valenza of Upper Morland Township, who's President of the Montgomery County Association of Township Commissioners. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing a person from the other side of the border to come into Abington this evening. Commissioner Valenza is unable to be here tonight. I guess one municipal meeting was too many for him this month, but I'm always up for the challenge. I was your President of your organization for the past year, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners. It's an organization that's dedicated to educating, training, local officials, and then also advocating for pro-municipal government legislation up in Harrisburg. So I do want to thank some of your Commissioners in particular, Commissioner Di Placido and Commissioner Gillespie, for aiding me in the conference that we just took part in, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Klein for attending, and your fantastic police chief, who actually moderated the session. So Chief Kelly, thank you so much. And I would also encourage you to do the following. One, please go onto the Municipal League website, PAMunicipalLeague.org. Under the PSATC tab, you'll see our priorities. I'd encourage you to look at them and contact Representative Dean and my good friend and former colleague, once a Commissioner, now State Senator Haywood, about those priorities. And also, if you do have the opportunity, please join us at next year's conference. Learn from each other. Learn that we all have similar issues, whether you're in Abington, Lower Marion, or the fantastic township of Cheltenham. We all need to work together. And the most important thing that I get to do as President is take the time to come to these meetings and present awards to two fantastic people that have dedicated so many years of service to your fantastic township. And so at this point, I would invite the First Commissioner, Dennis C. Supone, to come forward. I guess he did not know that he was getting the award. What we do is we honor Commissioners that reach 12 years of service and then increments of four years after that. So it is an honor to present to Dennis C. Supone, for 16 years of dedicated service, Abington Township Commissioners, this award. Commissioner, you're a fantastic advocate for your residents, and congratulations on 16 years of outstanding service.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
And now finally, it is an honor to present to your Board President, I would ask Wayne C. Luger to come forward. And I have the honor of having your Board President's parents live in my ward, and they are fantastic people and have a fantastic son. So on behalf of the Peasant Vegas State Association of Township Commissioners, we present the Service Award to Wayne C. Luger, for 24 years of dedicated service as an Abington Township Commissioner. And Commissioner, congratulations and fantastic job. Thank you. I do thank you, and since we met last night, I get to go home and enjoy your meeting. Thank you so much. Thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharkey. My mother does rave about Commissioner Sharkey, her Commissioner in Cheltenham Township. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Michael Markman for a presentation of the 2016 Robert W. Montgomery Award.
I can ask Winifred Morgan to step forward. So I'm going to start out by handing you the award. So the Abington Township Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation for your outstanding contribution in promoting, preserving, and protecting our community's natural environment. Your long-term care in volunteering in the beautifying of the trails, clearing of the creeks, and maintaining several spacious and prolific flower gardens in Lorimer Park exemplifies the spirit of this environmental leadership award. The Board of Commissioners, in the name of the entire township, shows its appreciation for your community involvement and dedication to Abington Township by presenting you with the 2016 Robert W. Montgomery Junior Award. Congratulations. Do you want to say a few words and tell us who's here?
I'd just like to thank the township for the award and the committee, and we really appreciate all that Abington mulch.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Markman, and thank you, Mrs. Winifred Morgan. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to our Chief of Police, Mr. Bill Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the Board. As you know, we give out many commendations to the members of our police officers throughout the year. However, only the highest level of commendations come in front of the Board of Commissioners. According to the guidelines within the department, when the Commendation Review Board analyzes a case and believes it should receive a Class III commendation for performance, those and only those come in front of the Board for recognition. This is one of those cases, and if we were to attempt to time it at a meaningful time, I don't think we could do it in a more meaningful way, although this just happened by chance. Commissioners, this light student incident occurred on December 23rd of last year, 1:42 p.m. Officers were dispatched to the 1,900 block of Fairview Avenue for shots fired. While checking the area, county dispatch sent out another call for hysterical female at 1722 Prospect Avenue. Officers arriving at that location and confirmed that, in fact, a male had been shot and was lying on the front porch. Witnesses provided officers the shooter information, including the vehicle description and direction of travel, and the officers began responding to attempt to intercept that particular perpetrator. The suspect vehicle was stopped at gunpoint by Officer Troy Senni, and the suspect was ordered not to move. Officers Andy Gibbs and Drew Kent drove in front from the opposite direction and blocked the suspect's vehicle in an effort to prevent it from fleeing and creating a bigger situation. Officers positioned themselves behind cover where they were able to see the vehicle, were in a safe position, and where surrounding homes and innocent people would not be in the field of fire. Sergeant Christopher Porter covered the suspect with a patrol shotgun from behind a minivan parked on the driver's side of the suspect vehicle and controlled the other officers to ensure fire discipline. Sergeant Porter was joined by Officer Andy Gibbs. Sergeant Porter verbally instructed the suspect repeatedly, "Show us your hands. Show us your hands." Officers observed a semi-automatic handgun in the suspect's right hand. Sergeant Porter continued to yell commands at the suspect, urging him to put down the gun, but the suspect remained noncompliant. The suspect was observed by Officer Gibbs to be opening his overcoat, which Gibbs believed was an attempt by the suspect to shoot himself, and this information was immediately relayed to all on the scene so that no one would think that there was something else going on. Suddenly, the suspect fired a round, which entered the suspect and exited and shattered the driver's window. The suspect then fired a second round into his body. Sergeant Porter immediately and continued to send out communication to the officers, preventing the officers from doing the natural thing in a situation like that, of course, which has returned fire. Officers fired no shots on the scene despite the fact that a gun was being fired within very close proximity of them. The Abington officers involved displayed teamwork, initiative, courage, and persistence, and, most importantly, great restraint in pursuing and capturing a dangerous armed man who had just murdered another person. The incident was reviewed by a panel of your peers, who recommended that they receive a formal departmental commendation for their performance, their efforts, and Commissioners, I can't imagine, especially in this time and date, any group of officers that all of us, including the members of the Board, would be prouder to give these Class III commendations. And so at this time, I'd like to call forward the persons who are going to be honored here tonight. Sergeant Chris Porter, Officer Drew Kent, Officer Andy Gibbs, and Officer Troy Senni, please come forward and Mr. ... Please be seated, everyone, for the presentation, which will be done by our President, by Director of Public Safety, Lori Schreiber.
Gentlemen, not you. No, you don't get ...
Stay up here, guys.
No. Actually, I'm going to borrow one of those back just to read what one of those says. This is a Class III award, commendation for performance presented to Sergeant Christopher Porter for courageous, decisive, and professional actions in pursuing and capturing a dangerous armed man who had shot and killed an unarmed person. It's my honor to give this back to you, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much. And I just, I sent an email out to the command staff right after this incident occurred. And in light of the things that have transpired in the country recently, I felt compelled to state that I thought the decisions made should serve as a blueprint for other departments. And I further said that my appreciation is extended to your outstanding command staff and officers for the judgment and restraint that they demonstrated throughout these unfortunate circumstances. So, gentlemen, you have my undying thank you. I knew both of these gentlemen very well, and what you guys did serves as a blueprint for other departments across the nation. And had you not done what you did, I'm sure the press would have covered it all over the place. So I personally want to thank you very much for what you did. Thank you.
Stay up there, gentlemen, please. Just Sergeant Porter. If you guys would stay up here, we have a couple others, and I'd like to have you guys as a backdrop while I call up the three other people who are going to be honored with you tonight. The first is Montgomery County Dispatcher Jordan Bande. Would you come up, please, Jordan, and join our officers up there? And I'd also like to call up our dispatch personnel that assisted in the entire process, Chris Tanzos and Shannon Wycheck. Please come up and join. Commissioners, as you know, the officers often are the ones put on the spot. They're out there on the street and have to deal with it. But we all know that nothing gets done well unless it is coordinated from behind and from dispatch, and their role is such an important one. And it was agreed by the Commendation Review Board that all three of them would be commended along with the officers for this incredible job. And we do have commendations for them that we can hand out if you would care to do that for us. Just the other ones. If you read the other one, it'll be fine. You have to read that. One goes to Chris Tanzos, and one goes to Shannon Wycheck. And then you have the other one for Jordan Bande.
And the one that says, "For your calm, patient, and professional demeanor in assisting members of the Abington Police Department in the pursuit and capture of a murder suspect." This is to County Dispatcher Jordan Bande. Thank you and congratulations.
I know many of you have some family members here, so if you would quickly like to introduce your immediate family, I'd like to let you do that. Let me start with you, Sarge.
Just real quick, my wife Susan's here, and that's it for me. My wife Shawna, my son Reese, my mom Joanne, and my dad Terry in the back.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. My dad's here. Everybody else is at the shore.
My mom Florence and my girlfriend Nicole.
My wife Brittany and my son Chase. Thank you.
I have my son Ethan, my dad Mike, my sister Kate, and my stepmom Karen.
On behalf of all members of the Abington Township Police Department, I know I speak for the Board of Commissioners, we want to thank you for the great job that you did in this particular job. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief. Again, my thanks to all the officers involved and the dispatchers. What they did, Chief, was just sort of miraculous, so my personal thanks to all of you from all the Commissioners. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll resume our normal agenda, and I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes, and for that, I call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luger. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners' meeting of June 9th, 2016. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hecker, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, President Luger. The Public Works Committee has three items on the agenda this evening. The first is PW1, and this is a motion to approve and enter into contract with N. Abenicio Contractors Incorporated for the Old Welsh Road Sanitary Sewer Project, Phase 1, Contract Number 149, in the amount of $956,415, to be funded from sanitary sewer retained earnings, and ISO move.
Thanks, Duncan.
The motion has been seconded. Are there any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Name and address, please, and please recognize the three-minute time rule. Thank you.
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. In conjunction with this one, I just, as you know, talked to other appraisers that are involved with this kind of work, and if the township will send out an RFP, there are appraisers that will offer substantially less. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping somebody will get back to me on that, Mr. LaFever or yourself, perhaps.
Any other comments for residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW2, this is a motion to authorize the expenditure of $25,200 for engineering design for the intersection of York Road and the fairway, with the funds to be drawn from contingency fund account number 01-01-002-5299, and ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW3, this is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2122 to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Wisahican Watershed Municipalities and wastewater treatment plants to work together in developing an alternative TMDL plan for the watershed, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents?
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I mentioned before that I believe that the way I look at this is, you know, in essence, we are spending too much money to get the TMDL to where the EPA believes that it ought to be. And so what we've done is we've gathered together with everybody and said, you know, we need a break from that. But the break is a pretty long break, many, many years. And what we've done instead of actually hitting the people who are causing the problem and getting funding from them to make our streams safe to the EPA standards, is we're saying, "We can't afford EPA standards, so we'll take lesser ones." So our streams in this manner of processing things are not going to be healthy. And I, somebody was going to get back to me and talk to me about how we can work up in Harrisburg or wherever we have to work to change that model so that we don't have unfunded mandates that cause us to do things like this, so that we care enough about our creeks that if EPA is establishing this as the level that we should have, that we find out who's causing it and we get them to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, President Luger. That concludes the Public Works Committee's business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee had no business this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, we'd like to move forward with public safety and call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director.
Thank you, President Luger. PS1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2120, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 9, One Way Highways, Establish, Section 9.1, Do Not Enter Signs, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here to Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, Section 28, Special Purpose Parking Zones, and ISO Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? And lastly, any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2121, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here to Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on August 11th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff and/or any comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PS3 is a motion to appoint candidate Charles Nicholas Jr. from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective July 18th, 2016, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? And any comments from residents? And if there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And PS4 is a motion to appoint candidate Adrian Sahelski D'Angelo from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective September 12th, 2016, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
All right. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Bill Kelly, who has a comment.
Just a very, two quick, very quick comments, Mr. President. Number one, I wanted to thank the Board for their indulgence for the presentation and the awards ahead of time. I think you could see how much it meant to the officers and to their families that they come out to see them in front of you. So it's just a really important thing, and I wanted to thank you for that. Secondly, I wanted to tell you that tonight, we're trying something new. Lieutenant Pat Malloy and Lieutenant Kelly Warner are doing what's called a virtual ride-along, where they're going to be out there riding around the township, answering calls for the officers, and sending out the information on, by Twitter and Facebook, and including some pictures and some information so that citizens will be able to tell a little bit about what they're going to be doing out there. So tonight's the first night of that virtual ride-along, and I want to make sure the Board members knew about that, and they can follow it on either Facebook or Twitter after the meeting if they care to. That's all I have. Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Yes, I echo your commendation to those officers. What they did was sort of miraculous, in my opinion, and I just can't still get over it to this day. But in any event, that concludes the Public Safety's agenda, and at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Bowman, Assistant Director of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Affairs, Public Affairs 1, this is Resolution Number 16-021, a one-year action plan and community development block grant budget. Motion to adopt Resolution 16021, approving Abington Township's 2016 one-year action plan and community development block grant budget, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or audience?
I'm not sure whether this is in 1, 2, or just in 3, but I was in conversation with Mr. Struthers today, Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I got it before you reminded me. I was in conversation with Mr. Struthers, trying to understand some of the finances. I never did get an answer whether the $975,000 was the total budget for that community building. Is that correct? And is that, I don't know if that's in 1, 2, or 3. I don't have those papers with me tonight, and they're not on this agenda.
Okay, well, we discussed it at Public Affairs. If I remember correctly, you weren't here, so why don't you get back, Mr. Struthers? You can get back to Mrs. Layman. Yes, sir. Okay.
But is the $975,000 for that 1,700 square foot building, is that the budget with the soft costs and everything else that he described at that meeting? That's what I don't have a clear answer for.
Do you want to give a brief answer then?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'll resend the email that I sent the speaker that answered that question. These questions have been answered.
I think it's comprehensive. It's a host of issues.
So can I just get a yes or no? Obviously, I didn't get that properly from the, I mean, that's ...
You heard the answer from the director, ma'am.
Yeah, so the, yes or no? Yes, the $975,000 was all the soft costs and on the program costs and everything you talked about?
The answer is no. You'll get a, you'll get a communication sent to you by the director. Thank you.
My, my. Okay.
Any other comments for residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PA 2 is Resolution Number 16-022, substantial amendment to the community development block grant budgets. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-022, approving the substantial amendment to Abington Township's community development block grant budget for fiscal years 2013, 14, 15, and 16, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? And comments from residents?
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And I would like to register my disapproval and say that, you know, until we understand fully what the finances are on that, and we, that we do not approve that budget we do not approve that budget for that building because what happened was when we had a community center that was requested, we didn't have the information, and it came from commissioners here. There's no HUD money for bricks and mortar. And obviously, in this particular case, the Roundhouse already had some standing there, so there was obviously bricks and mortar available if you already had, I don't know, toilet and plumbing or something in. I didn't get an answer to that one either, I don't think. I'll go back and read my emails in case I missed that answer. But the issue here is that those two buildings should have been combined, and the uses that were discussed at the committee meeting did not include the uses that reflected the massive amount of comment that came from the community. It reflected, when I watched the meeting that I was not at on the 6th, it reflected that you were planning to put the youth program there. It's wonderful. It's a great program, good place for it, okay? But then you had, for the building, an eye towards other things outside the community. And the Crestmont community responses were definitely that they wanted to meet the needs of those things in the community and have places to meet and things to do there, and not bring outsiders. That was actually a concern for them, bringing outsiders in traffic when you were going to do the senior center, for instance. It would serve a few seniors there, but then it would -- the massive building that was taking up their green space was going to serve people from all over the county. So that was part of the comments that we got, and I would like to see you table this. I know you won't, but I'm going to say it anyhow. I would like to see you table it until those considerations have been made.
Thank you. As stated in the previous item, the Director of Community Development will get back to you and explain the whole concept, and I think you might be confused slightly, but he'll explain it to you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PA3 is the 2016 HUD Program Architectural and Engineering Contract, Crestmont Park Community Facility and Arsdale Community Center. Subsection 1 is a motion to approve an -- a motion to approve an entering of contract with Kimmel Bogret for the preparation of construction documents for a new community facility at Crestmont Park in the amount of $78,000, and I so -- well, I'll hold that until we read 2.
Now, we're going to do them separate.
Okay. Then I so move, PA3, subsection 1.
Second.
Okay. PA1, subsection 1, has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff or residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and that -- what just happened the last time is exactly what I've been protesting. As soon as I sat down, you said, "You must be confused." I'm not confused on those issues. Okay, that's -- that shouldn't happen. So thank you for -- I assume you're agreeing that that shouldn't have happened?
I don't know if that was the right word, but I think you misconstrued the information that you viewed on television, and I think it'll be clearly laid out to you. I saw the email that was sent to you, and I think it was clearly delineated everything that the project encompasses and what the building's going to be used for.
Yes, I do understand what the project encompasses. What I said was that I believe that no consideration was given to the input from those in the community, which we had -- you did have input separately about the Roundhouse.
No, I disagree with that. I think that was all part of the conversation and the discussions that we had when we were planning this. So to your point, we're going to wrap this up. It's not a debate.
Okay, so let me just say what my issue is here, is that Commissioner Klein mentioned that, you know, the architect did not need to be that high. That's why we have people with professional experience on the board. We should take their advice in that. And then, secondly, that is a chronic problem that I think that we're taking bids and so on that are way higher than they need to be, and that, of course, was also an issue with the Welsh Road thing, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And then, Mr. President, PA3, subsection 2, is a motion to approve an entry into a contract with A.H. Adams and Company for accessibility modifications at the Arsdale Community Center in the amount of $13,125, the entire amount to be paid with HUD funds and no township funds, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And Mr. President, PA4 is ordinance number 2123, no smoking in the township parks and rec -- township parks and playgrounds, and for this, I will turn to Commissioner Rothman for a discussion of that point.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Just briefly, I have had the pleasure of working with our solicitors on the development of this ordinance, which was originally designed to prohibit smoking in township parks and playgrounds and certain limited areas within our township parks. In being specific, sometimes it was within 50 feet of certain playgrounds, and without getting back into what the ordinance formally read as, we as a board upon discussion and committee agreed to expand the language of the ordinance to cover and prohibit smoking in the entirety of our township parks, so that would include the playgrounds as well, so we don't have that limitation anymore. As many of us know and appreciate, smoking is a big problem in society, health problems. Also, the design and the purpose of this ordinance is to help encourage our children not to smoke, not to be exposed to smoke. Breathing secondhand smoke is obviously a problem, and also cigarette butts are the most littered item in our country and across the globe, so this will certainly help our environment as well. Another change that we have before us now is that originally, the way the language read, there was some confusion as to what would happen if someone was issued a citation for violating this ordinance. The language now more clearly reads that offenders do have the option of paying a $50 fine in lieu of showing up to -- before the Magisterial District Justice to argue against the citation, which could carry up to a $600 fine. So as we discussed during committee, it really would serve in most instances as a $50 fine if a citation was issued. And I'm not sure if we had another change to this, but I believe that that covers it. So that's where we stand right now. So thank you for the opportunity to present this to the board and our community.
Thank you. And thus, I'll read it in as a motion to approve the advertising of ordinance number 2123, which prohibits smoking in township parks and playgrounds, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PA5 is the Lubavitch Agreement. This is a motion to approve a one-year lease extension effective August 1st, 2016, with the Lubavitch of Abington at Albertthorpe Manor at the rate of $17,047 annually, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
Mike, what -- how far are we into the contract or the lease agreement?
This will be the final year of the contract. It was initially a one-year contract and provided for four one-year extensions. This will be the fourth extension. So if they wish to continue at the Manor, we'll have to negotiate a new contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any from the staff? And if not, any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PA6, Policy on Public Comment. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-023, revising the rules of procedures for meetings of the Board of Commissioners to provide for public comment at the beginning of each meeting, on any item listed on the agenda, and also at the end of each meeting for all other matters, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from the staff? Any comments from residents?
So there was a group of us that started.
Excuse me, name and address, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure, sure. There was a group of us that started in 2006. We came with the issue of the channel. They literally zipped through the meeting so that people who came to the meeting didn't even know where to speak. You've heard me say that before. So we worked very, very hard for many, many years to get the speaking rules in place so that if somebody had an issue, you would stop and say, "Staff, commissioners, audience." And that has worked really well for this township and for the residents who have come to speak. You are now trying to take away the most important part, which is the speaking right before the vote. Now, I agree, you almost never change your vote, okay? I agree that you're going to vote that way anyhow, but I believe that you should absolutely hear what your residents have to say about the things that you're voting on. Many, many times, they learn them for the first time after the committee meeting, and a lot of people don't even learn them then, as you know. I think you all know that, that most of the people in your wards don't know much about what's going on in here. And I did hear somebody say that the constant comments are driving people away, and they don't want to be dissidents. Fewer people than this were in the room when we first came in 2006. My husband and I were horrified. We went, "Where is everybody? These are the laws that are affecting our lives." There was nobody here. So it's not the comments that have driven them away. In fact, when we make these comments, thousands more people are aware, not only of what you do, okay, and you do many things well, okay, but you do think -- but because you give me such a short time to speak, there's no time to tell you the things you did well. There's only time to share with you what needs to be changed. And I think you know from our exchange today, for instance, that there are many things that are dire, that affect people's lives, that need to be changed. So this taking away the right to speak right before a vote, even if you only moved it to a minute from the three minutes so that people could say how they felt about what you were about to do, but taking it away entirely. You recall with the Welsh Road sewers, which I think is a really big deal, because the first bid was for $3,000 per property to appraise that property. That was outrageous, but there was no figure at the committee meeting. We didn't learn about that figure until the actual meeting, and nobody would have heard about it. It would have passed. Nobody would be allowed to get up and say a word. So I got up, and I said, "$2,000 per appraisal is a lot of money."
Okay, Mrs. Lehman, your three minutes are up. Could you --
Okay.
-- throw a close? Thank you.
So I will say that this is absolutely wrong of you to do, and I ask you, all of you, on behalf of your residents, to not take the rights away that we worked so hard to get and to put the rights back in, because when they learn something at the committee meeting, they need time to research and then to tell you what they think about it, and they should have that right.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, PA7 has been deleted, so we'll move to PA8. That's the Crestmont and Pembrynn Pool Diving Boards. It's a motion to authorize the expenditure of $7,600 for Crestmont and Pembrynn diving boards, with the funds to be drawn from contingency fund account number 01010025299, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any from residents? And hearing none? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Eugene Finnegan. I live on Roy Avenue. I know a few of you. I think the expenditure of money for diving boards is a bad idea for any pool. All you have to do is watch what goes on in the Olympics, which is on television. Everybody can see it. The divers have been doing this for a long, long time, and they come extremely close to the platform and the diving boards that they're going off of. I have a friend who dove for Dickinson College. He lost his scholarship to Dickinson and was immediately drafted because he hit his head and woke up in the hospital. This goes back to 1958. Korean War was still -- well, it was over in '53. The Vietnam War was just building up. I'm a Korean War vet. A lot of you people, I don't know whether you served in the service or not, I don't really give a damn. Pardon my French. But Howard Wenzel is the person that I'm talking about. He lived on Tyson Avenue in Glenwood. I don't know what it is. I don't really care. But he and I worked together at the GNI plant in Philadelphia in Germantown. It was a government industrial plant. We also went to Abington Senior High School together. I knew Howard very, very well. I'm sorry that he lost his scholarship because he hit his head. I don't know whether Dickinson wanted to meet or not. I don't really care. It's a fact. This is all documented in public records, if you care -- if anybody would care to look. But Howard Wenzel is the guy's name, and he lived on Tyson Avenue in the 100 block on the right-hand side. I don't remember the address. I think it was 126 or something like that. But to get back to the diving boards, I think they're a very poor idea. They may be good for a few people who know how to dive. Frankly, I don't. I wouldn't use a diving board if it was there. You're laughing.
Well, now, I'm telling you, they're springy.
You weren't paying attention.
I was. I was listening to every word that you said, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Finnegan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman, go ahead, sir. Wrap it up. Your three minutes are just about up, sir.
That's another thing I want to talk about, the timeframe. A lot of people cannot say in three minutes what the commissioners have allowed. Three minutes, if you don't have -- haven't had public speaking, can be an eternity. If you've had public speaking and you know how to use one of these things, you're a page butt. But not everybody has the voice for it, and I speak from experience, because when I was a police dispatcher, I missed a very important call.
Mr. Finnegan, I think you're kind of drifting away from this subject.
Yeah, I am getting away from it.
Right, okay. But listen, you may -- I stand, I just want to --
But one thing leads into another.
I know. We had a nice conversation today, you and I, but you made one statement I take exception to.
You guys have got to remember, Sam, the diving boards anyhow, because it's already --
It had nothing to do with the diving boards. You said you are a proud Korean War veteran.
Yes.
Then you made a statement after that, that you didn't care if anybody up here was in the military, in the service or not. You didn't give a damn.
I don't.
Well, I was in the Vietnam, and I do give a damn, and I think you do, too. I think you just said that.
Congratulations. You are salute. The rest of you can kiss my privilege, the Irish hair.
Excuse me, sir. I don't think that was necessary, but in any event, I think that was just a fortuitous slip on your part, and I don't think you meant it. But in any event, thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes our business.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bowman. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of our Finance Committee. our Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. Before we get started with the agenda, I'll call on Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, everyone. For real estate taxes, in the month of June, we collected $2,587,218 with a year-to-date of $25,589,346, leaving a balance of $1,173,836. The percentages of 96% and 4% are the same as June of last year. Comparing the amount collected to June of last year, though, was a decrease of $105,644, so it's fairly flat. As for the amount of monies deposited by various departments into the Republic Bank for the month of June, as you can see from our report, we brought in $4,373,821 compared to last year of $4,954,464, with a decrease of 58643. Year-to-date, $49,890,692 compared to $43,899,069, with a positive difference of close to $6 million. I also want to mention that for those of you who own properties here, which I'm sure it's everybody, actually, I mailed the school bills, school tax bills out, I think it was this past Tuesday. If you haven't gotten yours yet, please let us know. Thank you so much, that's my report.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC 1, motion to A, approve the May expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $3,738,816.18, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,728.01. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers and the payments of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of August 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners, Pen, DeGulme, Sanchez, Rossin, Myers, Marston, Brandle, Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
DePlacido?
Yes.
Fannen, Gillespie?
Yes.
Pecker?
Yes.
Kellnowski?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Fc 2, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for May 2016 as previously circulated to the board. Advance in travel expense reports were $0.03 and $3,821.47, respectively, five-month expenses totaled $20,243.09, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Fc 3, motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of May as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the month of May 2016 were $20,868.43 and $19,739.89, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and dispersments for the month of May 2016 were $25.00, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Fc 4, motion to accept December 31, 2015 Township of Abington Caffer and audited financial statements, single audit report, and agreed-upon procedures as presented by the township's independent auditors, Barbara Kane, Thornton, and Company LLC, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners?
Budge.
Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda. At this time, I'd like to call on comments from commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Bowman.
No comment this evening.
Commissioner DePlacido.
Thank you, President Luker. I just wanted to thank the people at the Arslay Community Center one more time. We had a second collection for the homeless and those who were addicted to opioids for the Philadelphia area. And I think if you remember the last time, I said we managed to put together almost 250 blessing bags, as the Angels in Motion like to call them. This time around, we did 380, and I can just see this getting bigger and bigger. So once again, thank you, Abington, and thank you, Arslay Community Center. And also, I wanted to thank everyone who participated and worked really hard for this year's July 4 parade, the McKinley Parade. Went down without a hitch, weather, as always, fantastic, hot. And for everybody that came along and saw, and for everyone saw the interview on Channel 3 where I'd mentioned that the parade was going on for about 100 years and totally botched that, it's only been a little bit over 50. I was assured that from a person who had been to the parade for 50 years said, "Don't worry about it, no one's going to watch it anyway." So thank you there. And also, when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you, President Luker.
Okay, it was brought to my attention, I inadvertently omitted public comments, and for that, I apologize. And if we could just pause to see if there are any comments from the public.
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryan Lane.
My apologies. Name and address, thank you.
So a quick question for you, the HUD funds that we had to return, were any of those funds already spent?
Mrs. Layman, you know this is not a debate. Why don't you just wait and get all that information?
There's a difference between a debate and a question for understanding. And I'm not sure, a debate is, I think this happened, you think that happened, and we're deciding which one's better.
Or you're going to get an answer, then you're going to follow that with a question, and then you're going to get an answer, and it goes back and forth.
Well, the rule was, the rules that you passed included that questions would be answered, and if they were able to be answered at the meeting, they would be answered. So that yes/no thing before that he could have said was against the rules, okay? So they would be answered if they could be answered.
Let's ask the director, would he like to answer that question, or would you rather wait and communicate the whole package to Mrs. Layman?
Mr. Chairman, the township will resend the email to answer the question.
That wasn't the question.
Mr. Chairman, the question was answered by email, and I will resend the email to the speaker tomorrow.
Okay, so yes or no? Was that a yes or no? I mean, I certainly didn't hear it.
I think the answer is next question. Do you have one?
Right, and if the question could be answered at the meeting, you're supposed to. The next question I asked was about the HUD funds, whether they were spent. If he can't answer them, fine. If he can, I'd like to have the answer right now. Were the $125,000, I think it was, were they spent already or not?
There's nothing that mandates you have to be given an answer on the spot.
No, except those were your rules, that you said that you would answer questions if you could, and then-
Mrs. Layman, if he needs time to research to get answers for you, he will do that, and you will be given answers. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, so, yes, I actually, no more questions, I wanted to make some comment. And I would like to just say that, you know, the most important thing I've been trying to convey here is that as legislators, your job, and I've said it before, but I'm going to say it again, your job is not to say, "This is the law, it's crappy, we're stuck with it, we're going to use it as best we can," okay? When the law's crappy, it's incumbent upon our legislators to change it. And so grants are one of those laws. Grants basically are, you give all your lunch money to the biggest bully on the playground, and he passes them back out to who he thinks they should go to.
Mrs. Layman, are you going somewhere with this dialogue? What is the question?
I didn't have a question, I'm making a comment. So my comment is that that was the point I was trying to make about grants generally last time.
Right, last meeting, yes.
And the other point that I'd like to make is that did not have to end up in a situation where slander, I was slandered in that.
Why don't we just discontinue that conversation? We won't have to bring it up again.
But I was going to say, I was slandered in that, and it didn't have to happen if you allowed just a small bit of conversation to prevent it.
We're not going to revisit that conversation, it's over, it's done with.
You're doing it again, you're interrupting at every point and not trying to understand that the smallest bit of conversation after my comments would have cleared up Mr. Markman's concern.
Excuse me, Mrs. Layman, enough. Move on to the next comment, thank you.
So my comments are going to be whatever you decide they should be.
No, we're not going to rehash what was discussed for this morning.
But that's a violation of the sunshine law. You know that.
Thank you. Any other comments, ma'am?
So, yes, allowing speaking for understanding is important, as I told you this afternoon in an email.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, we'll move back to comments from commissioners. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody who helped with the wonderful Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association Fourth of July parade, and those that attended. There were a lot of you in the parade, I know that. There were thousands there, I mean, that's no joke, there were. And it was a wonderful day, so thank you, everyone. And this won't be on the air, but there is the fill a fire truck and fill a police car on Saturday at the Giant in Roslyn and in Huntington Valley, just in case it gets on the air. Thank you.
Commissioner Pecker?
Thank you, President Luker. I just want to take a moment to invite everyone to spend some time in Ward 10 on Monday, August 1, between the hours of 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. It's the township's annual pre-national night out block party. Dave Rondinelli from Community Policing is our point person on this. He also happens to be a Ward 10 resident and does a fantastic job. There'll be entertainment, food, music, face painting for the kids, the police department will be out, the fire department. It's a wonderful evening, so come join your neighbors, you'll see me and my fellow commissioners out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Real quick, just the congratulations to the Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association for a great job they did. And I say this every year, there's no place I'd rather be than Glen Side on the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Klein?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners Apone?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
No comment this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman?
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. Just quickly, wanted to inform the public that the Abington Arts Center concert series is underway. I think literally a minute ago it started, but it'll be every Thursday throughout the summer for, I believe it's the next seven weeks. So take a look at the website for the Abington Arts Center, and I hope to see you at those events. And again, I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner DePlacido said, the McKinley Parade did go off wonderfully, and thank you to everybody who participated in putting it together and also was there that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Commissioner Gillespie on a really fabulous parade. Your entire committee, the entire parade committee, did a terrific job. I'm quite sure it was the longest parade that we've ever had.
We had reindeer, remember? We had two reindeer, real ones.
And the best attended that I have ever seen. So it was really a great day. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Markman?
Just at the Economic Development Committee meeting, we thanked Kaki Evans for getting the start certification for the township, which is a really great thing, which kind of leads me to, looking at the EAC and the Economic Development Committee and some of these other committees, I mean, there are just teams of volunteers in this township doing really constructive work, you know, putting tons of effort in of their free time to actually do good things in the township. And, you know, that's the one thing that doesn't get noticed as much as it should, but there are hundreds of people here working really hard to make this a better place to live on their own free time, not getting paid for it. And, you know, people like Kaki and the EAC and the Economic Development Committee, these are people who have other things to do and could be doing things. So I just want to thank them all, because it's a great thing, and I wasn't even aware of it before I was a commissioner. And constructive, positive work is a tremendous thing, and we have a lot of that here. So, thank you.
Good comment, thank you, sir. Commissioner Schreiber?
No comment this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, before we close the board meeting, I'd like to make an announcement that there'll be an executive session held immediately following our board meeting this evening to discuss a litigation matter. At this time, I'd like to make a closing comment, if I were to take about a minute of your time. Before the meeting started, I was going to have a moment of silence, but I don't think a moment of silence is enough or will not give enough justice to the horrors that the country has experienced this past week, nor the tensions and racism that we are experiencing today. I'm speaking specifically to the civilian shootings and subsequent deaths in Louisiana and Minnesota, and the horrific assassinations that occurred in Dallas. There must be an end to all the hatred that these incidents have caused, because it's worse than senseless. Whether there needs to be changes in the justice system or ongoing sensitivity training in the day-to-day actions of our police, we must do something constructive, and it must be done now. We must work as a community together through our police departments and legislatures to make improvements to this end. The Abington Police Department, in conjunction with Abington Township, will host a public forum this coming Tuesday, July 19, at 7:00 p.m. at Roslyn Elementary School at Susquehanna Road in Roslyn. The purpose will be to try to bridge the perceived or actual gap of trust and misunderstanding that some of the community may feel. We have an outstanding police department in Abington, but it has not come without hard work. There is always more to learn from one another. The intent is not to try to solve every problem, but to have an open and productive dialogue to bring issues to the forefront of what may be on people's minds at this time. We have representatives from law enforcement, the judicial system, and clergy in an attempt to find common ground. I hope if you attend, you will come with an open mind, compassion, and an understanding of what has transpired in the nation recently. Please come with the intent to help fix the situation and to fix as soon as possible, as best we can, and not to criticize. With that, I say, "Good night, good night, thank you, and be safe," and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.[1790.62]